Okay, we are back for item, in item C4. And we'll turn it over to our esteemed Fire Chief Knuckles for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and Happy New Year. Today, we're coming up with, to you, coming to you to approve our new emergency plan. We update them frequently to look, to match the standards of FEMA and Homeland Security and California Governors of Office of Emergency Services. The original plan came to you in 1999, right before the Y-2K scare that we had, and we developed our EOC at that time. We had updates in 2001, 2003, and 2006. So we do look at the plan regularly to come up with any changes that we need to make sure that we are eligible for funding. That is the number one thing that we have to worry about, is make sure that our recovery phase is done correctly so we get our funding as quick as possible. So, staff recommends that we discuss and adopt the Resolution Number 05-19, revisiting the City of Morro Bay's Emergency Management Plan, formerly known as the Multi-Emergency Response Plan, the MERP. Discuss and introduce, first reading by title only, with further reading waived on ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, renaming Chapter 8.08 of Title 8 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code as Emergency Services Organization, and amend Chapter 8.08 to provide for consistency with revised City of Morro Bay Emergency Plan. Basically, we looked at our ordinances, looked at our code. We're way out of date on some of the stuff that we added in the past, so I'm glad that we're going to be addressing it tonight. So, the physical impact of the adoption of the plan is we're going to be producing about 26 copies plus electronic thumb drives, because we know that a lot of times during an emergency that we may have to go someplace else. We're going to put the plan on thumb drives plus all the important forms on it, and we're going to use our fire personnel through a grant that we already received from PG&E, so there's no additional cost to the general fund. So, we identified 10 types of major events that can occur in our community. I don't know if some of you remember, we used to have eight, now we've got 10. The federal government has put some more requirements on us, so we're going to be talking about earthquake, hazardous materials, multiple casualty, and that's going to include all the pandemic illnesses or flus, flood, tsunami, civil disturbance, which is new, they separated the civil disturbance from terrorism, two different ones, Diablo Canyon incidents, terrorism, that's new, and adverse weather. That is for wind, ice, cold weather, we even can attach drought to it. If we have an immediate drought emergency, we can use that in that. And then also fire. So if you think about in our community, we opened up our EOC for earthquakes, hazardous materials, floods, tsunami, and a Diablo Canyon incident that occurred. So if you, since 1999, since we developed our EOC, we opened up our EOC for the 2017 Morro Creek flooding that occurred along Highway 41, because we had evacuations at the time. The 2016 Diablo Canyon event, we opened up the EOC in our fire station, which is the alternate. 2012, the Fukushima tsunami, the 2003 San Seaman earthquake, 2001 ammonia leak, and then the first one was the 2000 Y-2K scare that we had. So the purpose of our plan is, first and most, is to protect our property and public. That is the mandate from the federal government and the state government. Also, is to establish policy, we make sure we use standard emergency management system and national information management, correction, Incident Management System, SIMs and NIMS. California is a leader in emergency management and developed SIMs in the 80s, and it was a requirement after Locom Hill's fire, and I think it was 1989 that it occurred, to help standardize the response throughout California. After 2001, the federal government wanted to find a system that we'd have to use across the nation, and that's when they came up with NIMS. The bottom denominator of the whole thing is called the Incident Command System, and I think some of you have already received that training, you've heard that word before. And that's basically was developed by the military during World War II, and it's still used today, and today, we are teaching it worldwide. So I used to say that I could be able to go to anywhere in the state of California and have the same type of communication. Now I can say it's the nation, now pretty soon it's going to be worldwide. So that's really going to help us out on a regional approach for different items that may occur. Also identifies authorities to assign responsibilities and planning, basically by using the Incident Command System and developing checklists for each of the positions in our EOC, and we want to identify our potential hazards. We also, we want to identify the coordination between organizations and jurisdiction. This is the regional approach that I like about the ICS and also about SIMs and NIMS. Today, I would give a good example, two years ago during the Thomas fire, a lot of folks from San Luis Obispo County went to Santa Barbara County to help them out with the repopulation and evacuation of different locations in Santa Barbara County. We were able to step in, know what their plan looks like, and go right to work. And that is the blessing that we have with the system. Establish our city's emergency services organization that will lead to a fast response recovery, which is going to be proposed in our ordinance today, tonight. Outline pre-planned response plans through our annexes, and the annexes are different type of emergencies that are going to occur, and the reason why they call them annexes is because back in the old days, they used to put them in the back of the emergency plan, so they call them annexes, that's why they still call them that. We also establish responsibility for the maintenance of the plan, and that's on the fire department's responsibility, it's in the MUNI code for that. And also establish operational protocols, when we're going to activate our EOC, when, how we're going to use it. So, we have eight parts of this plan, and this plan is basically, throughout the nation, will look the same as other cities throughout the nation. Now, if you can remember, our last plan only had three parts, now we're up to eight parts. And the reason why we didn't change or add anything to the plan, by the way, our plan's going to be like 20 pages smaller, that it's just dividing it better so we have a better working standard. Because when we have an emergency, we're going to have an emergency, but then we're going to also, at the same time, start our recovery process to make sure that we get our funding as quick as possible. So we're going to be working on two plans at once. We may be working on a pandemic during a tsunami, so we're going to pull both those plans out together and work those two plans together. So the first part is called the basic plan, and this is what you got attached to your staff report tonight. This is the plan that you adopt by resolution tonight, and this is the 1,000-foot flyover. This describes, if you think about strategies and tactics, this is the strategy of your emergency plan, all 33 pages, and the tactics are all in here, all the different other resources that are involved. The beauty of this plan is, anytime we make changes to this plan, we've got to bring it to you for approval. Anytime we have changes, like in our nuclear plan or a new tsunami map, we don't have to bring it to the council, we just make the changes and train on it. So this is the beauty of this plan. So, this is the part one, this is called the basic plan. And then we have 10 hazard-specific annexes, and those are the 10 different hazards that we have. We have a resource directory, that's not only personnel, but also equipment that we have in our city or adjoining cities or county. And then we, this is probably the most important one, is the Recovery Resource Directory and Plan. It's going to be my goal, if we open up the EOC for an event, we're going to start recovery from day one, because that is, we have to catch everything, we have to make sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, to make sure that we get 100% of the funds that we're able to get through FEMA or Office of Emergency Services. So we want to start that process as quick as possible. Part five is EOC possession, Position Checklist, this is new, is a new requirement, we used to have it on the side, but now it's in the plan. So, we have the checklist in the plan. The next one, part six, is a debris management, that is also new. Up in Paradise, that is their biggest issue, is debris. Also, the contamination to the environment and to the watershed, and this is part of that plan. It's very important to the federal government and the state that we address it. That doesn't mean that we have to fund it, but we have to work with outside agencies to help us with it. I know the state of California, Office of Emergency Services has taken the lead on removing the homes up there in Paradise, and something similar happened around here, and I imagine they'd be doing the same exact thing. Part seven is shelter and welfare, and we work very closely with the Red Cross on that. And part eight is a new evacuation plan, PD has been working on. We're going to be using a new model that we learned down in Santa Barbara County, that worked very well down there during the evacuations and repopulation plans. And also, our County Chiefs Association is just talking about having all our county on the same exact format plan, evacuation plan. So, we're the first city to head towards that way, and we have evacuation maps, and we're coming up with 11 different zones for evacuations, and if we have an issue, we'll be developing benchmarks to when we evacuate those different zones. So it's a pretty basic, clear-cut plan that Santa Barbara County came up with, and we're just going to follow suit and do what they did. So we're going to continue, and so what this plan tells us is when and how. This plan tells us when we can recognize an event, how do we notify our response personnel, when do we open up our EOC, how do we assess our situation out there, when do we mobilize our personnel, how do we alert our public and keep them informed? That is one of the biggest challenges that we have today. When do we implement protective actions, and how do we reentry and recovery? How do we do that? So this is what the plan is all based off. So one of the things that, especially after Hurricane Sandy, the continuity of operations is important, but also it may infect personnel. We may have an emergency that, like the '95 and '96 floods that we had here in Morro Bay, both 41 and Highway 1 was blocked off on both directions, we were in island for about four to five hours. What if our council members, or three of them were in San Luis, and when it was in the North County, and we had to ratify a quick state of an emergency? That, we have a plan already in here, and it's on page 22 of the emergency plan or page 269 of the staff report, that basically, it marches out our succession planning so that if we have to get two or three more, council members up there to get a quorum, that we have a process to do that. Also, in that continuation of operations, we have all, each of the departments also. It's pretty basic, but, so for example, for the fire department, it would be the fire marshal, then the fire captain, and then the fire engineer, and then firefighters, basically, for succession and planning for the fire department. But we have it spelled out in our plan, which is nice, so we don't have to come up with it 2:00 in the morning next Tuesday. And then also, one thing that has been around since we've been a city, and it's probably from the, back from the 50s, terminology is called Disaster Council, and it's basically a three-person council, involves the Director of Emergency Services, which is the city manager, involves me as the Deputy City Director of Emergency Services, and one council member. And we get together once in a while, once a year, to discuss changes in the plan, if we see any, or any ideas how we can, to improve our training, or how we can do our training, or how we can keep the public informed, and that's all that is. Basically, right now, Scott and I, we get together a few times a year and discuss our plan, and so we get together, but we'd like to get one of the council members also on board with that. And like other cities, the city manager, as the Director of Emergency Services, will head up that committee, because he's ultimately responsible for our emergency plan and also for our emergency resources in our community. So he'll be heading up that council for that. So we'll be, we'll be asking for some changes in our MUNI code to meet some of the federal and state requirements that are occurring, expand our definitions, rename some of the positions that are redefined today. The use of SIMs and NIMS in the operational area concept is important, we have to put it in some type of binding policy, and MUNI code's perfect for that. And also, what I like is we added, we provided direction for the city council concerning declaration of a local emergency. Now, part of the plan, we do have a template for writing up a declaration, but the MUNI code tells you what to do, and that's the changes that we have in there. So what's happening next, we're going to be producing, if the plan is adopted tonight, we're going to produce our copies and produce them and get them out to the departments, start training our city employees. I'm going to work with the city manager and schedule a Disaster Council meeting, and I imagine Scott will be talking to the mayor about that. Also, we need to provide some training this spring and summer to our policymakers, which is you guys, and also the city attorney, the clerk, and the city manager, to the EOC managers and CERT volunteers, that is mostly department heads, city hall staff. And we're doing something unique in our area, we're training CERT volunteers to shadow different positions, so that they don't have to be experts, but long as they understand what ICS is, at the communication level of it, and you give them a checklist, we can put them to work. And because it can take up to 45 people to run an EOC, and your city staff isn't large enough for that, and that's one source that we have, we've got a lot, we've got 47 active CERT members right now, and they're all eager with that. And then we need to also train our field personnel, so they understand the language of ICS, understand the span of control, and understand how it all works. And my ultimate goal is to participate in our Diablo Canyon drill in the fall of 2019. It's been a couple of years since we've done that, and I'd like to get back on that track. So I am open for any questions, and thanks for allowing me to speak about this.
Thank you, Chief, for your comprehensive presentation. Appreciate also the handout, having the handout available so that we can see it, that's great.
You know, I do apologize, Mr. Mayor, that I didn't talk about some changes that we found in the basic plan that we're going to be making before we put it out, and there were some changes, for example, some word changes that we placed the wrong words, said "tsunami" and "fire," that's going to be on page 17. We have in, also in the basic plan, we use the word Community Promotions Committee, committee, correction, yeah, Community Promotions Committee, we don't have one, so that's going to be taken out. I was, I did place that the San Seaman earthquake was a 6.3, but it was actually a 6.55, so we're going to be placing that in there. And we're going to be taking out the title of the Disaster Council. There's a couple places that we missed, named it as Disaster Preparedness Committee, and the city manager is in charge of the Disaster Council, not the mayor. And the only other, one last change is that we have a font change on page 256.
Thanks for that clarification, appreciate it. Let's go to council questions.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Addus.
I have questions.
Yes.
Thank you for your work. I've sat on committees where we've redone these plans, and I know the time and effort that it takes. Where are the schools, where do the schools fit in? Is that under the child daycare centers on page 254? Is that where our public schools fit into this? Those that are obviously in the city limits, or our private schools that are in city limits?
So believe it or not, the Department of Education out of the county is in charge of the schools. So we would have a liaison with the Department of Education in the school, the county education or the school district, and they will have a liaison in our EOC, and they have plans for evacuations. The only place that we really use our schools for us is that we use them for evacuation centers. So our primary evacuation center for the city is Del Mar Elementary, is out of the tsunami inundation zone, it's got a great kitchen there, it's got a great place, we could probably house about 400 people there. Our secondary one is at the high school, but if it's a flood event or a tsunami event, obviously, we're not going to be using the high school for that. So, the school district is in charge of the kids, and we just use the buildings when they're gone.
What about the Montessori school? That isn't, it's not a preschool, but it's a private, it's not a private school, it's a charter school.
That's correct.
It's not part of San Luis Coastal.
That's correct. We would have to, just like if it was a care facility or office building, we would have to come up with a plan to evacuate them.
And so are they under this child daycare center, when it lists Resource Directory or other, how do they fit in?
Yes. They're in the Resource Directory, so we have a point of contact, we have their address, and we can go to work.
And then mass shootings, is that under, I know, it's not, mass shootings aren't called out in here, I see multiple casualty, and I see examples of multiple casualties, but I don't see any mass shootings called out.
So we call them in the county "active shooter" situations, and that would be under the mass, basically the mass casualty incidents.
Multiple casualties.
Yes, we do have local protocols along with PD, we work together, but as soon as the event is over, it becomes the MCI, and we would be using that portion of the plan to take care of our citizens.
Great questions, other questions? Yes, Councilman Heller.
First of all, I've, I think your presentations are always just spot-on and very concise and succinct, and I just, I really like them and the way you're prepared, and I really appreciate the effort you put into it.
Thank you.
Both as a public member and now sitting up here, I want to thank you for that. The question I have is, this is the first reading, can you talk to me about when this work will be completed, or what happens next?
You know, you talked about the ordinance, Dana or...
So, the phrase "first reading" just means that it's the first vote the council's going to have on this, and then by state law, it needs to come back for a second vote, at least five days later, which should presumably be the next meeting, and then the ordinance itself would be law 30 days after the second reading. That is just for the ordinance itself. As for the actual plan, my understanding, and the chief can speak more to it, there's still some more details, I believe that you're working out on some of the sub-plan details, but this is, this is the main plan, but I'll let the chief speak to that.
I'm 98% ready to go. I'm hoping to go to press next Monday and have all the binders produced next week, and at least electronically, we'll have it ready to go, so that if something happened today, we'd be able to pull this plan out and use it.
Okay, great, thanks. Great question, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to thank the chief, because I sent my questions ahead of time, and he incorporated everything that I suggested in his report, so thank you, Chief Knuckles.
That's great, great.
Thanks again, Steve. A couple questions for you. Besides schools, what other stakeholder groups are involved in this, and how do we communicate with them as agencies or entities within the community itself? Like, I'm thinking of chamber organizations, or are there any other types of organizations that you interact with in terms of input or education, et cetera?
You know, the input is basically, is given to us by the federal government and the state government. They're going to tell us how and what they want the end results. Because this is a reaction plan, it's not like the mitigation plan, where you're going to come up with plans to reduce hazards for the future, this is a reaction to an emergency that's occurring at the time. So, basically, an emergency plan is like almost a dispatch plan, that you'll have, if we have a tsunami, we will do this, 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 and that. And I think one of the best things that we can do to educate our public, I want to place our basic plan, just the first part, on our city website, and then occasionally hit it with, use our social media, say, hey, come on by, check out this, did you know, that type of thing. Because I think, you know, back when we had the ammonia spill, back in 2003, the plan was only two or three years old, it wasn't really practiced throughout California yet, and we nailed it, we killed it. And what I mean by that is that we followed the plan, and within a 26-hour period, we're able to identify a hazard, we're able to mitigate the hazard, and the next day was the Harbor Festival, and we had to get everything ready to go so we could open up for the Harbor Festival within 26 hours. And we had to evacuate 10,000 people, correction, 7,000 people in our town from the spill. So we all did that within 26 hours because we had a plan. So, I think through time that I do want to do some, and also by training our CERT members, we do have, like I said, 47 active members, but we have trained in the last 12 years over 750 people in a sterile bay. And we have a class coming up on January 15th next week, and we're sold out, and we have studied room only. And it's, we've got a great community to be involved and stuff like that. And once a year, I do train our CERT on it, and we bring them into the EOC, we get it up and running, we show them what it looks like, and we go over through Incident Command System, because that is most, that's basically just the language that we use inside the building.
Do you have an internal working group that works on this, or is this just chiefs that get together and...
You're talking about the changes in the plans and stuff like that?
Right, exactly. In other words, your staff, do you have an internal working group, or is it all of your staff that are involved in giving input?
Yes.
How does it work?
And one thing that I'm real happy about our county is that all the chiefs, we get along great, and we actually have a Type 3 Incident Management Team for San Luis Obispo County. If we had a multi-day event, we will be calling them to help us staff our EOC, because we have individuals in the county that are trained at different positions, like I'm trained myself in different positions in the EOC to work at the state or federal level. The blessing of that is, we're going to standardize the training throughout our county. So when I talked about we're going to have a policy group training, EOC manager training, and field training, actually, I'm on the committee for the Chiefs Association to help standardize and bring other instructors from other cities. So we'll work in Morro Bay one week, and next week we may go down to Pismo Beach, then we may jump up to Paso Robles and have consistency on the training, so that if one of our Morro Bay folks can't attend our training, maybe they can attend the Paso Robles training, and it's basically the same stuff, different location.
Great. Thank you, appreciate that. Open it up to public comment, is there a member of the community who'd like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council, and entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 05-19, revising the City of Morro Bay Emergency Management Plan, formerly known as the Multi-Hazard Emergency Response Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion to move the staff recommendation and a second, a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Addus, any discussion?
I just want to thank you, Steve, and I'm going to echo what Councilmember Heller said, you are the consummate administrative oversight chief, you, your particular attention to details and your preparation for these emergencies that, you know, we don't even think about, although in California, we've experienced a significant number of them recently, and to be prepared and ready and have a viable plan that helps to protect and preserve life is critically important, and you are the consummate professional in making that happen, and I thank you for that. Appreciate your, also your presentation style as well. So, I'm highly supportive of the motion, and again, my thanks to you and everyone involved in this.
It does take a village.
It does. Any other comments?
I would just say ditto, I would just echo the same comments.
Great, all right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Addus.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson.
Yes.
And Mayor Heading.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
So that concludes our business, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
We are second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second part, didn't, we only did one part. I thought you did both, my apologies, I will move back one step and take a second motion.
I move that we introduce for first reading by title only and with further reading waived, Ordinance 619, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay, California, renaming Chapter 8.08 of Title 8 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code as Emergency Services Organization, and amending Chapter 8.08 to provide for consistency with a revised City of Morro Bay Emergency Management Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Addus, any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Addus.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson.
Yes.
And Mayor Heading.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I was just testing Councilmember Davis to see if he was going to finish the actual second part of that. Not true, not true, he's, he got me on that. That brings us to council declaration of future agenda items, any items that you want to bring up that you'd like to consider for future agendas?
I have one.
Yes.
I would like to see if my colleagues on the council would consider looking at the meeting times, at specifically start and end times of council meetings on a future agenda.
Consider changing or adjusting the...
Consider looking at a change to the start and end times.
Okay, is there support, do I see head nods for that? I see one head nod. So I see, okay, so we have support for that, okay. Great, other?
I have one, I'd like to see if there's some support to discover or explore town hall meetings, or another way of communicating with the community about the WRF project, there still is a considerable amount of residents in the, in the city who are, have problems with it, and I'm not sure that this meeting format always addresses them, or that even the subcommittee meeting... the subcommittee meetings can address them. So my thought is that perhaps a Town Hall meeting might be one venue or way to have those discussions. So that's.
Just to help flesh out, are you thinking of like, potentially the liaison, having Town Hall meetings to get input on WORF CAC-related issues, or?
Yeah, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking really about a Town Hall meeting with, which is facilitated, which for the position for the current WORF project is presented, and then the counterargument or the other options that a lot of people in the community have not felt have been really addressed, be discussed also, or presented.
Okay, I'm not.
Is that, are you understanding me?
No, I apologize.
You're not, no one's understanding me?
Yeah, Jeff and I don't mean it to be difficult. I'm not sure if you're, if you're looking at alternatives.
If you're talking about going back on alternative, on decisions that the council has already made, I would not support that.
Well, I'm talking about the concept of healing the community and having open discussions so that we listen to one another. I don't know that that has really happened, to be honest with you. I don't think that we've, that both sides of the equation have really listened to the other side sufficiently, and I'm trying to find a way that we can get in the same room and discuss a difficult issue and actually listen to one another. Town Hall is the only way that I can think of doing that, but if there's another way to do that, let's do it. Otherwise, we have this open wound, which is not going to just disappear, in my opinion.
And I, I'm listening to that. I'm wondering if, if city council meetings don't provide the opportunity during public comment to?
I don't believe they do.
So you're thinking there's?
I don't believe in three minutes that the public can come up and, I mean, they can say their piece, but we're not obligated to respond, and we probably won't respond. And, and if, in the interest of being transparent and rebuilding trust in the community and trust in government, I think we need a different, a different process to bring the two sides together.
May I ask?
I'm open to suggestions.
Well, I'm just going to ask the City Manager, how many public forums facilitated have we had on the WORF project? Do you recall? Because I know we've had at least two, possibly three, where we've had basically an open town meeting where people were free to come, and, and not in a formal setting, but we have done that. So I'm just curious how many we've already had like that?
I think to, there you go. Depending on how you cut it, probably between two to four.
Yeah.
We had two, we had the April one of 2018, it was moderated by the League of Women Voters. Is that the correct name? And then Don Maruska facilitated one at the library, and then we had one that wasn't necessarily facilitated, but at the, the active adults. And then follow, or before the three sub, Citizen Advisory Committees met to review the rates, we had, have a Town Hall meeting on a Saturday, and I think we had pretty good participation on that.
On the rate, I recall that.
Yeah, and that was, we tried to kind of, as Councilmember Heller was just suggesting, try to find a different format to allow for different voices and more free flow of conversations, so it wasn't just speaking at the community and, and opening multiple venues for them to explore dialogue, whether it was, well, I don't feel comfortable stating my position, I want to write it down on, so I can remain anonymous, and you could see that maybe five or 10 people had a similar question, and then staff was really on the spot to respond. I mean, really pointed, really, really important questions that we had to answer to the best of our ability, right? A decision has been made on the project as far as the rates are concerned, and DIR is approved, and there are a lot of things that have been completed. You know, I don't know how to help facilitate this conversation here. I mean, I know that multiple councilmembers have discussed different ways of engaging with the community broadly, beyond to include the WORF, but also other issues impacting the community, and that may be a place to look.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my take on it is that there have been Town Hall meetings, but basically, they've been presentations by the city with very little listening done to the other side. And I'm trying to look for a format or a process where the other side can speak and be listened to. That hasn't happened, but I do.
So I'll, I'll just take exception to the side, I think that just promotes exactly what you're trying to address, dissension, when we talk about sides. Maybe differing opinions might be a better way to do it. I'm hearing two things. One is communication regarding WORF CAC issues initially, and I almost heard going back and reexamining alternatives. I don't, I do not support that. That's a decision that's gone through. Second, I heard healing, and I'm not really sure what that means, but I certainly want to support that. So maybe we could ask Councilman Heller to meet with staff to help flush it out a little bit, and then bring back.
Healing really means listening, and I don't feel that, whatever you want to call it, but the thousands of people in this city who voted against the rates have not, do not feel like they've been listened to. So I've talked with Scott a little bit about that. I think the Town Hall format that's facilitated is an important step that we can, that we should take.
Can I just ask a question?
At least discuss, discuss in public.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
What would it look like to be listened to? I'm not sure the difference between being listened to and winning.
Okay, let me explain it. In a facilitated meeting, and I don't know if Martin Amelli is interested in jumping into this or not, but in a facilitated meeting, you would have basically both opinions, both sides presented. And, you know, it's like an active listening exercise, that the, the side that's presenting before everyone immediately responds and says, no, 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 we're not going backwards, et cetera, et cetera. You sit in your chair, and you listen to what the, the other side's concerns are, listening. It's not, it's not about, it's not about going backwards, it's not about going forwards, it's about acknowledging that there are other opinions that have not been heard.
For what, can I just ask, for what purpose? What, what's the outcome of that?
Well, the outcome, because, because the issue has significantly dissolved, in my opinion, dissolved trust in this government and in this city, to the point where people don't want to come to meetings, they, you know, they have all kinds of negative things to say about Morro Bay and how the government has worked. It rebuilds trust, it, it rebuilds, well, basically, trust, trust in government.
So I'm going to just maybe, for the purpose of time, I'm not sensing significant support, because I don't think it's been significantly flushed out. I don't want to shut it down, but all I'm asking, which we've done in the past, is, and I'll look for head nods, because this is a council decision, but, but I'm not real clear on what, I think I get the intent, but I'm not real clear about the method, and if it could be discussed with staff and then be brought back to the next meeting?
Sure.
As a consideration for?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'll talk with.
Just to get clarity?
Yeah, I talked with, with the City Manager about it already, and I'll continue to do that.
Everybody okay with that? I don't want to, again, I don't want to shut it down.
Okay.
I think we need to understand better what the purpose and the outcome would be. Because that would, that would really color the way we would vote on something like that.
Well, I've explained it as best I can. I'll, I'll talk with Scott about it tomorrow.
And I have to take exception to the statement that we have not listened to alternatives. I know that I have listened to every public speaker, and I have met personally with many other people who have differing opinions, and it just came down to a difference of opinion as to how to interpret the facts. So I, I don't want this to revolve around the idea that people were not listened to, people were not agreed with. So I will grant that.
Again, we're starting to discuss an item that hasn't really been agendized yet. I don't want to do that. I want to, I want to lend credence to what you're, what you're asking for, but I think what I'm hearing is, we'd like better direction as to what it is for us to consider it, and if that could happen with the help of staff and bring it back next time. We really appreciate that. That'd be great. Thank you. Other agenda items?
Oh.
If not, yes.
Just, I know they were already discussing previous items, but the advisory body liaison, subcommittee membership, that's a future agenda item.
Right.
You know, and so I don't know if you have a timeline you want to bring that back by?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay, great. And the other is the Civil Discourse Resolution, and I assume that's next meeting as well.
Next meeting.
Just wanted to put that out.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Yeah, we'll get together. If, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
I don't know, I don't think it'll ever fail, but I'm just going to do it. We don't need a roll call on this. I'm just going to say, yes, Councilman Addis moved to adjourn, Councilman Heller fervently gave a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same, that motion is carried. Thank you. Next meeting, regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. at the Veterans Memorial Hall located at 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay, California. Thank you all for your attendance, and we will see you then.